Their names aren't fitting the screen properly. Now there we go.
That's still, uh, this is a little off, I know.
All right, all right.
Better behind you.
Okay, so, uh, welcome everyone. My name is David McFadden. It is seven o'clock. This is the November sixteenth regular meeting. Uh, I'd like to call it to order. Let's, uh, rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor McFadden?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Shaw?
Present.
Trustee Brooke?
Absent.
Trustee Casker?
Present.
Trustee Shara?
President via Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, before we go into our guest presentation, um, I'm just gonna read the Lakes report because I found it to be significant. Hi, Jim. Uh, this is from NEAR. Uh, we visited Tuxedo Lake on October twenty seventh to conduct the routine monthly water quality sampling. At Station One, the deep spot, water clarity was good with four point one meters. That's thirteen point five foot of visibility. That's fantastic. Uh, this is better than last year's October clarity at the deep spot of two point nine or nine point five feet. Uh, the surface temperature was sixteen fifty eight point three degrees Fahrenheit. Oxygen conditions were poor at the bottom of the lake with no oxygen, starting at ten meters, thirty two point eight feet and going to the bottom at sixty two point three feet at the deep spot. This indicates a significant portion of the lake was anoxic. Uh, we did not see any algae bloom while we were there. Uh, we also conducted full lake aquatic plant surveys of Weewaupon Three and Tuxedo in September. I'm happy to report that we did not find any Eurasian milfoil in any of the three water bodies. I just wanted to put that in the record. Thank you for everyone that was involved in that project. All right, so, uh, Josh, do you want to introduce your presentation?
Um, sure. Can I just ask, is Jeff Demansky, uh, uh, from Jewel with you?
Uh, no.
No.
Okay.
So we'll table that later till he arrives?
Yeah.
Josh, I don't know if you guys can hear me, but I, I'm, Glenn is here virtually from Jewel.
Oh, okay. We can hear you.
Are you, are you planning on presenting or was Jeff gonna present in person?
I can certainly, I'm, I'm here to, to, uh, to do it. Yep.
Great. Um, so, um, uh, just briefly, Glenn Weinberg is, um, with Jewel, um, which is a, a firm that is an administrator for community choice aggregation projects throughout New York. I think, uh, they represent just over fifty municipalities. Uh, the town, uh, recently retained, uh, Jewel as an administrator. Uh, Jeff is actually Jeff Demansky, uh, Glenn's partner, uh, has actually presented, um, um, at this forum, uh, previously, um, but, uh, Mayor, as you know, my recommendation, um, is that we, um, uh, consider retaining, um, Jewel so that we're working in parallel with, uh, the town on this important initiative. So we thought it made sense to bring, uh, Jewel representative back to, um, uh, give a ten minute, um, brief presentation on what community choice aggregation is, uh, and the benefits of, of, of the initiative and program and the benefits of working with the town. And so with that, I'll be quiet and Glenn hand it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Josh, and thank you to the rest of the board.
Welcome.
Um, for, for inviting us in tonight. Uh, yeah, so I won't, I won't, um, uh, repeat too much of what Josh said, but we are, uh, just starting to work with the town of Tuxedo. Um, and so we thought it was a good idea to, to speak with the village again to, to catch you up on, on that progress and give you an opportunity to, to join in should you choose to. Um, and, uh, just as a reminder, for everybody, I know you've, you've heard it, uh, at least once before from Jeff. Um, but it's always helpful, I find, to, to sort of just go through the basics again of what community choice aggregation is. It's a mouthful and a, a kind of clumsy acronym. So it's useful just to sort of redefine it for everybody. Uh, community choice aggregation or CCA, and you'll hear me use that acronym, uh, is a state-enabled policy. It's enabled through Public Service Commission order, uh, that allows, it's a municipal home rule authority. So it allows cities, towns, and villages throughout New York State to, um, take control of their energy, uh, decision-making by selecting default energy sources or suppliers on behalf of their residents and small businesses. Uh, so today, of course, the, the default, um, if you move into town and set up your, your electricity, your defaults will be Orange Rockland Utilities. Um, this gives the, that decision passes the decision down from the state level or the utility level to the local level. Now, why do municipalities choose to do that? Uh, they do it primarily for three reasons. Uh, first is to stabilize energy costs uh, and give opportunities for, for energy savings, um, through collective purchasing. Uh, so just as, as, um, you know, with any sort of market, uh, or you can think of sort of Costco or something like that, when you have bu- a bulk purchasing power behind you and you buy in volume, you have the opportunity to get a discount. Um, and that's really what CCA does. It, it aggregates the total pool of demand um, from the residential and small business customers within a municipality or group of municipalities uh, and brings them out to market together in an effort to get the best possible deal um, from the energy supply market. Uh, so whereas the utility is, is fairly strictly regulated in the way that they can buy and the way that they can offer, uh, retail electricity supply to individual customers, uh, CCA gives the municipality to act as basically one large customer in a marketplace, uh, and therefore there's, there's all sorts of benefits, uh, to that. Um, the first of which is cost. Uh, the second of which is access to renewable energy markets that, uh, individual customers don't have through their utility supply. Uh, and that's really what we've been specializing in New York as an administrator. Uh, as Josh mentioned, we, we represent more than fifty municipalities throughout New York State. Um, um, the vast majority of which have, uh, used the CCA tool to access, uh, clean electricity supply, in many cases, one hundred percent New York State uh, renewable electricity supply at a fixed rate, um, for longer, long periods of time, you know, usually two or three years, uh, per contract. Uh, there are several options. That's not the only option, but that's kind of been the fairly, the, the, the kind of conventional, um, product in, in New York. And the third, uh, is to increase consumer protection. So CCA provides a layer of protection both contractual and through, and through state oversight and, um, and expert consulting like, like Jewel uh, around that energy purchasing and the management of those contracts to make sure that customers, um, are serviced properly and have access to, to all the benefits, um, of ener- that energy markets provide in a way that has not previously been available, uh, to, to the average, um, small customer like a residential or small business customer. Um, so that's the primary program, um, um, and benefit. Um, now I'll say a little bit about our approach. Um, we have, as I mentioned before, uh, taken this tool and used it in order to, uh, it, to, to, um, offer clean electricity supply, but also to innovate and connect with, uh, community solar uh, projects in the area to offer community solar subscriptions, uh, which provide guaranteed savings to, to subscribers. And by, by sort of channeling through the CCA, there's additional, uh, benefits that you can realize, uh, through collective purchasing, just the same as it is with the basic electricity supply. Um, uh, we are working extensively, uh, throughout New York State, uh, but also specifically in Orange and Rockland territory. Um, we just, uh, I believe we represent fourteen municipalities in Orange and Rockland territory. Uh, we just closed on a contract for eight of those, including the town of Clarkstown, um, the town of Orange Town and several, uh, villages throughout, uh, Rockland and, and Orange, including, uh, the town of Highland and the village of Highlands Falls. Um, and they are starting a, they just closed on that contract. They'll be starting that contract in April. And that's a, an eighteen-month contract for, for the most part, for one hundred percent renewable electricity supply, um, which is really critical. Rockland Territory, Orange and Rockland, um, basic supply is over ninety percent fossil fuel. Um, so it is really critical to take that step locally, um, and CCA enables the municipality, uh, the village to do so. Um, there, this is an opt-out program, meaning it does become this default for all residential, eligible residential and small commercial customers, but they can freely opt out should they choose not to participate. Um, they can do so at any time with no penalty or, or fee whatsoever. Um, and there's no cost or obligation to the, to the village. Uh, we do all of the, the work, which includes extensive public outreach and education and communication throughout the village prior to any decision being made on the village's part. Um, and all we do with that, we do so, uh, speculatively. So we only get paid if there is a contract in place with the supplier at the end of that, that, um, process. Uh, and if there is a, a, a contract awarded and signed by the village at the end of that process, we get paid by the supplier. Uh, so there's an administrative fee that the supplier pays us. It, it does not come from the village and it does not come directly from the customers on their bills. It is pulled by the supplier. Um, uh, as Josh mentioned, there are economies of scale, so to speak, by working with the town. So should you choose to move forward and join a bid with the town, there is a volume, an additional volume discount um, that you'll receive, that you'll, you'll have access to by working in conjunction with the town as well as any other municipality in Orange and Rockland territory that is on the same timetable, um, and therefore in the same bid. Um, so there's, there's obviously plenty more I can say, but I want to keep it brief and leave time for questions. So I can stop there and maybe if there's particular, um, points that you want to dig into, I'm happy to do so.
Okay, I, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, Glenn, the, uh, the village, uh, itself would be a participant in the CCA if it wanted to be?
For your own meters, you mean? Like for Village Hall? Yes, uh, you could. So any, uh, any meter in the village is eligible to participate. Um, those meters that the village controls that are, um, small, uh, what are called non-demand. So that might be, for instance, it could be Village Hall. Um, um, but it could be any other small load would, would automatically be included on an opt-out basis, just like the average home or small business. Larger meters, like larger facilities, you know, the DPW garage, those sorts of things, um, would not automatically be included, but, but certainly could take advantage of the, of the rate should they choose to as well.
And I think you know this. I'm a Nexamp, um, customer. Uh, what that means is, uh, two or three, maybe four years ago, I bought a share or I reserved a share of a, a local, uh, solar farm, um, which gives me, you know, um, so I, 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 I know that I've, I'm getting solar energy. Um, as you know, uh, electrons don't really care, um, who, how they were generated or where they go, but, uh, I added solar to the grid. That gives me a discount on my Orange and, uh, Rockland, uh, bill. Um, I, you know, I'm being subsidized by the state for having, uh, committed to the project. Would I have to give that up? Um, or would I, uh, you know, would I have to opt out basically of the CCA? Or would I have to give up that Nexamp commitment?
No, that's the really, it's the great thing about, um, these sort of two programs. And you can think of it, it really has two, we, we think of it really as two components, um, of this, of one umbrella program, uh, which is clean energy, electricity supply and community solar. Now, you may say, well, don't they sort of cancel each other out? Aren't they the same thing? Um, and the answer is, in New York State, no. So when you sign up for community solar, that community solar farm is not actually, just as Josh said, is not actually supplying you your energy. You are getting a benefit from it, a financial benefit, and usually a ten percent guaranteed financial benefit of your utility bill. Um, but you are not actually, your, your signing up for community solar farm does not actually green your electricity supply. It does, of course, mean that there are some clean electrons injected into your local grid on your, with your name on it. Um, but, but it does not replace your electricity supplier. So if Orange and Rockland is still your electricity supplier, believe it or not, Orange and Rockland is still buying every month for you based on how much you use and they are buying ninety-plus percent fossil fuel, um, for you based on what you use. So it is actually a double benefit to be able to green your electricity supply and stabilize your cost. And if you've been looking at your Orange and Rockland bills lately, you know that stabilizing cost is something that is going to be top of mind for a, a lot of consumers, um, not just in, in the village of Tuxedo Park, but all over. Um, and, um, and you, you get additional environmental benefit for having, um, renewable supply in, uh, over and above those clean electrons that are injected into the grid on your behalf. So you can take advantage of both. Both have a financial benefit and both have an, uh, an incremental environmental benefit, um, an additive environmental benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, uh, Josh and Glenn, I moved the agreements and other things, uh, that you submitted, uh, into the record. I didn't get a chance to put it on the agenda, but it's gonna be, uh, in the agenda under new business. It'll be eleven D.
Great.
If anybody wants to ask questions about that during comment section, that's where the information is and it is also posted online. All right. Thank you very much, Glenn.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, let's go with reports. Uh, Chief?
So we had, uh, two hundred and eighty-one calls for service, uh, one criminal case, accidents, uh, just property damage accidents, uh, eight traffic tickets issued, eighteen warning tickets issued. We responded to six fires and or automatic alarms, one burglar alarm. Assisted the town Tuxedo Police Department one time. We were assisted one time. And, uh, patrol miles, uh, we patrolled two thousand seven hundred eighty-nine miles and approximately seven hundred forty-seven vehicles come through the, the, uh, the gates on a daily basis. It's, it's low, it's starting to lower down now that the summer's over.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Any, uh, irregularities with the automatic gate system?
Yeah, we had, we had a few issues. Um, we had to have, uh, Rockland security come out, uh, to adjust the camera. It, just minor bugs that.
It wasn't opening quickly enough?
It, it wasn't opening, it wasn't reading plates. It, the, the camera, the way it was housed, it was it, it, the, a heavy truck went by, the vibration, it would move the camera. So that, um, that, uh, vendor came out right away when, when I called him and, uh, he, he's really good. He responds right away. And he tightened it down so that we don't have that issue anymore.
All right, hopefully. Well, this is a good reason why everyone should keep their tags. Because during those times when it breaks down, we can still use it manually by looking at your tag. Okay, thank you. Um, one thing, I noticed that on the, on the screen, we are cut off. Wondering if that will come through on the actual recording. That did happen to us once.
I can't tell. The, the, the screen behind you was clear.
Oh, it looks good on me. Yeah, I think that's, that's zoomed in, right? Okay, I didn't notice that. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Jeff?
Uh, lately, we've been picking up leaves. We just started about a week ago.
Mm-hmm.
We installed a new catch basin on Serpentine Road. Uh, we ran into electric line for the new air conditioning and needed it at the police station. Started painting fire hydrants. Uh, did some work down at the racetracks, building some benches and cutting down some dead trees. We spent a couple of days down there. Um, we did some work over at the dam, removing the shaft for the valve uh, at the, uh, Weewaup Dam that has some issues that the engineers are working on. Um, serviced all the, uh, salt spreaders and got them mounted in the trucks. We've been working on the plow to get everything ready. Just work with Nelson Treesters on a few trees removal. That's the bulk of it. John's continuing to run meters on irrigation. Did various water and shore markouts for Dixapane, New York, uh, obtained weekly water meter readings on village accounts and, and meter reading, uh, that's broken for. Uh, replaced a few electrical outlets at the sewer plant, cleared the sewer block on one sixteen Towerdale Road. Uh, and made sure all the heaters and stuff in the farmhouse buildings and things were up to snuff.
Okay. Yeah, it's a lot of work. Thank you very much. Did a great job too. Place is looking good. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, let's see. Who else do we have that would like to give a live report?
One. Um, we had no CVO requests, uh, since the last Board of Trustees meeting. Uh, we have one violation issue regarding some hazardous trees. The neighbor hasn't responded. I'll be sending him a certified letter this week. Uh, the, the Paze project, the Rifkin project, um, are proceeding pretty well at this point. Uh, Mr. De Haydo had a large project that he had received approval for a few months ago. Uh, he has decided to put that on hold till the spring. Uh, and the Klein renovation at one thirty Continental Road is going fairly well, uh, doing a bunch of interior, uh, work at this point. Um, the project status, Tuxedo Club, the bar approved the landscaping and the new light pillars within the parking area on November thirteenth. Uh, the Perna project, uh, that was approved by the planning board on October twelfth and the BAR on October twentieth. Uh, the Nicholson project, they finished these stone walls behind the pool area and they're discussing changing the pool fence and gate, uh, style at this point. Uh, Delener on Summit Road has been pursuing, uh, an alternative driveway connection and I have, uh, been corresponding back with her and her attorney and offered them guidance to complete their site plan table, which, uh, is not complete at this point. Uh, regarding the Communications Committee update, the Communications Committee had an online conference with Ed Longgreen with Crown Castle, uh, about the viability of installing the cell tower on Potucket Road. Um, the area is out of view of most homes in the village and it's elevated to hopefully a strong cell signal. Uh, Walter Cooper, the consultant for the committee, has reviewed mapping provided by Crown Castle and is waiting for answers to questions that he raised. Um, as Jeff mentioned, they've started to paint, uh, number of the hydrants. Um, regarding the DPW lease agreement with the company that's working for O N R, uh, we got a payment for five thousand four hundred dollars, which covers their rental through, uh, through November. Um, I think they expect to be finished by December or January, so we'll get two more payments, uh, in the amount of, I think, twelve hundred dollars each. So that's progress. Um, we had, uh, a little lackluster report. Uh, we auctioned off seventeen items that were, uh, kicking around the DPW for way too long. Uh, nine of the seventeen items were bid on, uh, total bids, total bids were two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. Um, I authorized the auction company to accept the bids that were presented to us and with the board's permission, the rest of the items, we'd like to discard in the dumpster. Um, they're old generators, old, uh, old weed whackers. Uh, if you want, I'll show you the list. We tried our best. It's old stuff.
You're welcome to throw it away.
It's done. Thank you very much.
Trust you. Sure.
Good. Um, what else? Um, uh, the Weewaup Beach and Park has been closed up, closed up for the season. Uh, the water's been turned off. Bathroom fixtures winterized and the bathroom doors have been locked. We also removed the flags from the flagpole. Uh, the projects at the police department are going fairly well. Uh, the air conditioning and heating has been installed and, uh, seems to be working fairly well at this point. And, uh, the reshingling of the roof is underway and hopefully should be finished in another week, depending upon the weather. Um, the last item of the Climate Smart Communities, uh, particip- participated in the November seventh meeting and facilitated the adoption of the recycling program at all the VTP buildings. All of our buildings have recycling containers. And, uh, in my travels, they all seem to be, being used, so, which is good. And I've been providing Jim Hayes some additional information on DPW vehicles and on the municipal buildings um, for his reporting, uh, services.
That's it?
That's it.
Great. Good job. Thank you very much. That's quite a bit.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to add that you mentioned that the Weewaup, uh, Park and Beach Club is closed.
Oh, sorry.
It's actually open, although those facilities are closed. The gate remains open and people will confuse it year-round. Um, what do we have on the, do we have a, a, uh, ice fishing rule for that?
Yeah, last year you, it, it's in the code and last year you allowed it after Jeff checks it, right?
Mm-hmm.
They check the depth of it and then, then it's permitted to, uh, Weewaup Fishing Club members.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great, thanks. Uh, does anyone have any questions about the minutes?
No.
Nope. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna open it for public comments. Uh, two minutes per person on agenda items, please. Uh, I'll start in the room. Anyone have any comments or questions? Yes, Jim?
Yeah, I just, uh, I, I don't need two minutes. I just wanted to, in terms of CCA, which you received a very clear presentation of what that is. Uh, I, I'd just like to say that, uh, because of the inventory that we've done, uh, if you went with CCA, that would be an immediate savings of sixteen percent of our greenhouse gas emissions. Now sixteen percent, meaning it might seem like a lot, but, and when you think of all the little things that need to be done to be added up, this is big. It would be very big. It's very important to do that, if provided the source is green.
And it also represents quite a bit of work that, that you and the committee have done. Is, is that correct? Also in conjunction with the town?
Yes.
So I want everyone to understand that this, this has a lot of effort behind it and thank you very much for that. Okay, anyone in the, uh, on Zoom call would like to make a comment? Give us a shout.
Hi, um, I just wanted to add to that about the CCA that the town started its, uh, outreach.
Okay, so this is, this is Michelle, everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
From, uh, To Eagle Mountain Road and I work with Jim on the Climate Smart Committee and Josh and, um, the town board. So we started that process. We, uh, officially kicked it off November one and had a presentation Monday night. So we're, uh, starting the education outreach.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, we appreciate all, all the work the town has done too. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, it's closed. Uh, let's move to the consent agenda. Uh, written reports, obviously, minutes. Um, a FIC Nature Association does an annual, uh, bird count in the park and they're applying for that to be renewed again. Uh, anyone have any questions about that? Um, hiring of a part-time police officer, bacon Esposito. We swore him in earlier today, so I'm assuming we're gonna approve. Uh, also, uh, Tinka and, uh, John did a lot of work, uh, trying to locate, and also Brian, thank you, Brian, to locate a, uh, attorney for collection of town accounts. And
Water, water and sewer.
Of water and sewer. And right now I've listed the arrears we have in the town. It's on the website. And, um, the company that they recommended is also listed. Uh, let's see. What's the name of the company?
Collection Bureau Hudson Valley.
Collection Bureau Hudson Valley. Uh, they have a good rate structure and they seem very professional and competent. Uh, so we'd like to get them going. What, what's the total, uh, arrears in the town of Water? Hundred something thousand?
Total outstanding, one twenty-eight.
One twenty-eight.
And we have eighty-four thousand, which is over six months.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully. Okay, thank you. Hopefully we can start knocking some of these down.
That's plus eighty-four. Eighty-four part of the one twenty-eight.
It's like zero to six months is forty-three and change. Six months and over is eighty-four. If you add them up, you get one twenty-eight. Yeah, so the total balance is one twenty-eight.
Eleven eighty-four.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and, uh, I believe that's it, right?
Yep.
All right, any questions before we, um, queue it up? Uh, resolve that the Board of Trustees approved the consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
Yes.
Second.
Second.
No, A through E.
No consent.
Um.
Oh, oh, I see.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much.
Um, Mayor, did we determine? Can I vote?
Yes, you can.
No, you can't.
Oh, he, we announced where he would be. Oh, it doesn't matter.
Did you do the local law for?
I'm not sure. I, we may have. I think we did.
You did the local law.
Yeah, I think we did the local law.
The address was published?
Yeah.
Only on the agenda.
I added it myself.
On the agenda.
Yeah.
On the agenda, which was published on Friday.
I mean, look, it, it, back to the matter, matter unless there's.
Right, but he can't.
No, I, I think if you, if you announced it and it was out there and he's obviously out of town, yes, you could.
I actually have a surprise. Someone's gonna be coming to his hotel, The Wind, in about twenty minutes and knocking on the door. It'll be really fun. We'll all be watching. All right, so, um.
So Joshua did vote. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Josh is a yes.
And Josh, avoid the Palisades when you come back.
He's in Vegas.
I know you're in Vegas. When you come back, LaGuardia to the office today was three hours and twenty minutes.
Well, that's awful. That's awful. It's getting really bad.
Palisades was stopped.
Oh. All right, so, um, let's move to, uh, old business, the Sterling, uh, garbage contract. It's on a month to month now, everybody. Um, and the question is, do we want to analyze it and do we want to go out to bid? Um, my recommendation is that, uh, without too much effort, we go out to bid. The problem is, it's the same people always that do it. Um, but like we saved twenty thousand dollars, uh, on our insurance annually and got a better carrier, travelers. I think it's worth at least looking into. And, um, so if that's okay, uh, I'll move forward with, uh, getting that organized. How does everyone feel about that? All right, uh, let's go out to bid on the garbage contract in a second. Yes, sir.
How do we publish the bid or the proposal?
I'll look into it and let you know, but, uh, there's several places we have to advertise it, including our own website. And, uh, are there any government sites we have to put it on?
Why are we, moved it on the publication of record, Times Herald Record? And we obviously post it on our own website.
Right.
And if we feel there's any other companies that we should notify about it, we can notify them directly.
I'd recommend you use the New York State Contract Reporter.
What is it?
New York State Contract Reporter.
Uh huh, what is it?
It's, it's a bid website. I get proposals every day that I look for, for my company. So, um.
What type of stuff? Cause I maybe, since we have the same business, I should do that too.
Everything. I mean, they're looking for snow removal, they're looking for, uh, you know, upgrading parking lots. It's, it's every contract that state agencies are, are using municipalities.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Um, so, uh, we have a second. All in favor of me putting this project, the momentum to get it up to bid?
Hi.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was a perk. She'll second everything, Paul, if you want.
I just didn't hear it. I just wanted to make sure the vote was done. Sorry.
It's on the record. All right, so, so, uh, okay, good. Uh, let's move on to, uh, new business. We are looking at, uh, an analysis of our filming in Tuxedo Park, uh, code. And we brought it up last meeting and I was able to locate something that I liked because it deals with certain specific issues. I sent that to the trustees, that law from California. And I sent it to Brian and, uh, before the meeting started, Brian sent us something. I didn't have a chance to read that. Do you want to summarize that, Brian, for the board?
I just, I said it's a, it's comprehensive draft law, the one that's from Hidden Hills, but it's by Los Angeles, California, so it's kind of, you know, a lot of material, cause they probably pushing to deal with filming on a regular basis. So there's just some provisions in there. You've got to decide right now. That graph has a public hearing every time a permit's requested. Uh, notifications by mail and posting in a thousand feet of the location, so. The framework is good. It's just a question of what do you feel is appropriate for the village in terms of, you know, approving that permit or what conditions you want in there? So we could take that ordinance as a framework and, you know, tailor it to the village. It's just a board decision on whether you want public hearings and notices or you want to scale it down a little.
Right, so obviously we're not gonna make that decision now, so.
No, we need to have a draft, I think, for the village to put out, cause this is, you know, state of California. Not to say it doesn't apply, but we have to change some of the language and then we could put it into a format for the village and then you can decide, you know, if you want to move that public hearing.
We could have discussions in between, but yeah, let's.
Yeah, you could always open the public hearing and then decide, you know, if you make changes.
So they have a public hearing every time there's a, uh.
That draft has a public act for every permit, you know, and then they have a posting and a mailing for anybody within a thousand feet and, you know, some other requirements, so.
Yeah, this, it does appear burdensome.
Well, because I think it's designed, you know, they're close to LA, so they probably.
But at the same time, it does allow.
Right, I, I, I think what we should do is, I, I don't know if we circulate that or, you know, modification of that for comment before we start drafting into legislation, cause we gotta cut out a lot of the stuff and.
Yeah, we can draft it into a village format, make it applicable to the village of Tuxedo Park, leave in basically the concepts and then you guys could have a discussion initially.
It's good for us to have something in front of us.
Yeah, and then you could say, strike this, strike that, you know, and we can put it in.
Exactly.
Set the public here.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, um, then we have, folks, uh, Sally had, uh, offered to repair a stone wall. If we couldn't do it, um, it's a village-owned wall and therefore, um, we would reimburse her. I don't think we need to do that. I think we can do that in-house. Even if it means bringing on a stonemason in the spring on a temporary basis.
I'm not sure what wall it is.
Okay, so it's basically across the street from her boathouse.
Oh, okay.
And the general rule of thumb that we use is, is a cut and fill rule to determine ownership.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
How does that wall become a village wall?
Uh, because of the cut and fill. Analysis that we use. Now, you may not like that analysis, but if, if, if the road couldn't have been put in by the village, unless a retaining wall was there because of the cut, then it's village-owned. If it's, if it's not because of the cut and fill, like say the one in front of Cachiobo. Or there was the debate over the, uh, Cindy's Wall. And we settled that and with a compromise. We also settled one, there's precedent for another one that we settled. Right down past, um,
The Gruderich.
Gruderich. That was a compromise we also did. That was under Stevens. Um, so there's some precedent. Um, but the main point for tonight's discussion is, I think we should bring it in-house when, whenever we do it, not hire someone from the outside and then pay someone to do, you know, for that. We can, we can handle it ourselves if we hire somebody that has that expertise, unless we have someone on staff now.
I think it's probably appropriate we hire somebody.
Mm-hmm.
I think we can probably get a better price.
Yeah, we're, our, our contract, uh, with the union for the DPW allows temporary hiring of up to a certain period of time length, as long as this, the hourly rate is below the lowest hourly rate of the contract.
The union contract.
Correct. So the lowest paid worker, it has to be maybe at that or below it, but certainly not above it. So, I mean, I think we just table this till the spring. Um, there's no emergency. What do you guys think? Makes sense?
Easy to table it. I don't know how, how, I haven't looked at it.
Yeah, we should get over there. Jeff should get a, a chance to look at it, I think.
Look how much it is, how long it is.
How severe it is.
Right. Well, it's not an emergency.
Yeah, okay.
From what I saw, the.
It's aesthetic right now. It's preventative. Yeah, it needs to be pointed up and, you know, we can do it for less money in-house. That's just a fact.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'd have to go out to bid three, you know, there's a lot involved. All right, thank you. Um, now, uh, next on the new business is levying, re-levying unpaid taxes. Uh, you all were distributed a list. I did not publish it because I didn't want to put the names out there, but we have one without the names. Uh, let me wait for Elizabeth to get back because she was running the show here. And Jeff, if you want to leave. Free to leave where you want. Have a great night. Thank you for everything, Jeff. Okay.
Fifty percent of the owners.
I don't know. So, um, what would you require? A resolution for this?
Yes, I have one here. That's what I ran away for.
Okay, why don't you, and read it and I'll, uh, ask for the second and I'll take.
Perfect. Okay, resolve that the village clerk be authorized to send the County of Orange Commissioner of Finance the attached parcel list of unpaid two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three village taxes and penalties totaling sixty-three thousand seven hundred six dollars fifty-two cents for levy onto the January two thousand twenty-three town and county tax bill of each parcel. And that the parcel list has been compared to the original tax warrant slash tax roll and found to be correct.
Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any questions?
Um, so the town does this.
Seventy-four thousand.
Uh, no, sixty-three thousand, um, seven hundred six dollars and fifty-two cents.
That's pre-interest.
That's correct.
Right, and pre-penalty.
That's correct.
Uh, you had a question?
Yes. You mentioned the town, the town we levied it or we? No, we, we levy it onto the town and county tax.
This gets levied to the county and then in January, when the town issues the town tax bill along with the county tax bill, this shows up on that bill in January with added penalties, I believe. And then usually by April-ish, we get reimbursed from the county and the county holds the, the lien or the debt.
Right, so the county takes on their sensibility chasing it.
Yeah, so we don't have to get involved with that. I believe usually by April, we're made whole with a fairly substantial penalty. I don't know if it was nine percent or seven percent in the test. Yeah, nine percent.
Okay.
Yeah, the penalty is, uh, four eight hundred dollars here.
Mm-hmm. And any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you.
Also, okay, and finally, um, Josh, we have, um, information on the website, new business climate smart task force. It includes your summary uh, that you sent to us in email as well as, uh, documents to sign, as well as the Excel spreadsheet of the towns that are being serviced currently from this company, Juul. Um, so what would you recommend that we do regarding, uh, any, uh, agreements or resolutions?
Um, I think my recommendation would be to select Juul as, uh, the village of C C A adminis- administrator, subject to, um, um, uh, uh, negotiated agreement that's satisfactory to, I don't know if it's all of the, uh, the trustees or, you know, it's Brian, but something along those lines where we go ahead and move forward with them. Subject to, you know, uh, a satisfactory agreement, uh, being negotiated.
And there's no obligation you had mentioned in your, in your presentation.
Yeah, I think that, I think the really important point is what we're obligated to do, this, what this agreement would obligate us to do. Well, first of all, it places obligations on Juul to, um, uh, uh, help roll out, um, marketing of, of the plan, deal with all the, the regulatory and, and, uh, and, uh, state um, entities that we would have to, to deal with, uh, help us negotiate ultimately with an energy provider, uh, collect bids, et cetera. There's a number of items that are laid out in the agreement that are their obligations. Our only obligation is that, um, we commit to ensuring that they are paid in the event that we ultimately move forward with the CCA program. But if we never move forward with the CCA program and we're under no obligation to ever move forward with the CCA obligation, uh, or program, if we, if we never do, we have no, no, uh, monetary obligation to them. So I think it's a, I think it's actually a pretty straightforward decision. I think there's benefits to, uh, catching up with the town. We're only slightly behind the town. I think there are benefits to moving in parallel, uh, with the town. As I mentioned in my document, the town did go through an RFP process. Um, uh, and there are clear benefits to us working with the same administrator that the town is working with. And I think the last one I would make, and it's in that Excel spreadsheet that, um, uh, was also attached to my memo. If you look at, I think it's about fifty-four municipalities that Juul's working with, the majority of those, um, contracts to Juul were awarded without an RFP. So it's not like we're doing anything, uh, special here.
All right, so, uh, all right, thank you. So, uh, Brian, what he's, I think what we're saying here is that rather than doing an RFP or going out to bid, uh, we're taking the cue of what the town did. They went for an RFP. We've reviewed all of them. Our committee did. And they're recommending that we go ahead with Juul. Now, is that something that, uh, would be acceptable?
Yeah, we've, um, worked with Juul in another municipality. We've already dealt with this agreement. We've made changes to that agreement. It's accepted already, so we can always provide that to the board.
Yeah.
In case you have comments, you don't have to go out to an RFP. In this case, it's similar to a professional service. It's not like you're purchasing something right then. Uh, so that's fine. If you choose to go with them, you, you know, move to authorize, you'd execute an agreement in a final form approved by.
So we have that agreement. So, uh, what I'd like to do is have you, I, I'd like to pass a resolution that will sign the agreement pending, uh, acceptable changes or, or review by your firm.
Yeah, I would say in a final form approved by village council and we can always send it out to the board in the meantime with our changes.
All right.
They've accepted our changes. It's a standard agreement, so.
That's good.
I know they'll accept the ones I'm going to make if you have additional ones.
All right, so does any, do any of the trustees have questions about where we're headed with this?
Yeah, quick question.
Yeah.
Josh, I thought Glenn said they, they receive a fee from the power company. And I think you just mentioned something that we want, we have to guarantee that they get paid if we. So they, they get paid by the, uh, uh, I, Brian can probably explain this better, but the way it's gonna work is embedded in the bid from the electricity provider will be Juul's cost. So, yeah. There's no cost to the village taxpayer. I mean, indirectly there is, right? Because that. On their taxes, but on their utility bill. Co- co- correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll, yeah, exactly. No effect on the village budget, per se. No effect on the village budget, correct. No effect on the village, but, but we, 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 as a village entity, will never write a check to Juul.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. That was clear. Uh, why don't you, if you don't mind, uh, read a resolution into the record and I'll ask for a second and take the roll.
Sure, so the resolution would be to, uh, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Juul assets as the CCA administrator for the village in a final form to be approved by village legal council.
You have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, good. So, um, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna go into executive session to discuss legal matters and, uh, payment of an employee or employees. Uh, it is exactly.
Seven forty-eight P M.
Seven forty-eight P M. Um, this is a closed meeting and we'll be coming back into public session. If anyone that's on the call now would like to, to wait, look forward to having you to come back and, and, uh, into the public meeting. Um, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Let's shut her down.
John, please don't forget to add me back in.
LeBron?
Yeah, we just, Chief, you wanna say?
I made him a co-host.
Yeah, I just won't put him into the room, that's all. So he'll stay here.
All right, so, take, take us out. Thank you.